I'd like to bring us back into meeting. Thank you, Mr. Gant. At this time, we're now moving to public hearing number five. And this is our Economic Development Director Joanna Helms has an opportunity to present. Ms. Helms, you have the helm.
I've never heard that before. Hope you don't hear it again.
Well, you didn't hear it when you were younger.
No.
Do I need to read the public hearing statement or is it all self-described?
I'm sorry?
Do I need to read that public hearing statement there on the agenda?
Oh, the Project Blue Water?
Right.
I think we'll just go with that and run with it.
Okay, great. Let me quickly just review for council our town of Apex incentive policy and the eligibility requirement before I go into the actual project summary. The town of Apex incentive policy is referred to as a development and investment grant, and that was approved in December of 2016. The objective of the grant is to encourage the location, retention, or expansion of new or existing business and industry that will create jobs and produce private investment in the town of Apex. The grant amount is based on the investment made by the company and the annual taxes paid on that investment. A business or industry may be eligible for the grant if they meet both a new investment threshold of $3 million and a new jobs creative threshold of 20 with a wage rate that is at or above the Wake County average. In addition, the business or industry must have another location choice in competition with the proposed Apex location. This policy pertains to business or industry located within the town of Apex corporate limits. And finally, the business or industry should also be in the decision-making process and that have previously announced or have decided to make their expansion or location in the town of Apex. So that's just kind of a review of the policy and the eligibility and the requirements thereof. So for this project, Project Blue Water, this project represents an innovation and product development center. They are proposing a facility of 50,000 square feet of new construction. Total jobs, new jobs to be created is 51. The annual average wage of the employees of this company would be 88,000.
What did you tell me?
Eighty-eight thousand.
Eighty-eight thousand average.
Mm-hmm. Some higher, some lower, but that's average. And that does exceed the Wake County annual average of 56,000. The total investment is 11.3 million. This company has experienced ongoing growth and is creating this development center to further foster its growth. The proposed new location will primarily employ engineering management, engineers, and technicians, thereby providing highly compensated job opportunities in the community for individuals with engineering and other technical expertise. The company is also considering a site in a neighboring municipality. So the proposed incentive scenario that you are considering tonight, and again, the grant will be awarded to the company, could be awarded to the company based upon the investment they make and the taxes paid on that investment. The grant awarded to the company representing Project Blue Water would be determined as follows. Again, the proposed investment is 11.3 million. Based on that, the company would pay $42,940 in annual taxes. The town would award a grant in the amount of 90% of those taxes paid, which equals $38,646. The grant is for a period, the proposed grant is for a period of three years for a total incentive of $115,938.
Say that number again, I'm sorry.
Total incentive over a three-year period is $115,938. And this would be, of course, there would be a performance agreement that would be signed between the company and the town that would spell out all the stipulations, all the requirements, all the things that they would have to be subjected to approve, and if there was any such fair, then they would not receive such grant. So it would be completely protected. It's a back-end, if you will, grant, which means they had to perform first and the award is last.
All right. Thank you. Any questions from council?
Do you know if, this is the first time Apex is ever doing something like this, right?
Well, this incentive policy, which was adopted and approved in December 2016, this is the first time I've come to you with a proposal for an incentive.
I don't think before your time we've ever done incentives, as far as I know.
We have not.
I'm not aware. And again, this is a tax grant based upon, this is a grant based upon taxes paid. So there's no, technically no out-of-pocket money for you that wasn't already there.
So who does the check the boxes? Do you do it?
We will have an agreement between the town and the company and, yes, between the attorney and myself, we will be following up.
I'm sure that it has been twelve.
Yes, yes, exactly.
And does this company have opportunity to grow and expand past the 51 jobs?
The 51 jobs is what they've committed to for this phase of the project.
Sure.
But there could be additional phases as well, yes. But not that we're not aware of at this time.
Okay.
But again, one of the statements they made in their proposal was that this company has experienced ongoing growth and therefore they need to make this move to a new innovation and development center.
You said the average salary in Wake County is $56,000. And if I look at their list of employee types, there's only five, there's only five out of the first 38 that would possibly even be below that 56,000. So this is a premium company in terms of salaries. An average of $88,000 is a really good company for us to get, for people to work here. And as a, based on that, if I had my choice, I would push it out for three years as an incentive policy for this company because, because I think this is a really...
It is three years.
I would push it out to the four years. I would push it out, I'm sorry.
You're not the proud, telling me it's four years. Push it out to one year.
Well, if our economic development manager feels that the three years is fine, then I think the council should look at that. But I just look at the salaries and what we're getting here. When we put this policy together, I looked at three years would be something that, of an incentive policy that we would give to a company that might have an average of 56 or 60,000 salaries. This company is proposing 88,000 average. That's a hell of a high average versus 56,000. And I think it might be $32,000 above, but I'm not good at math. But I mean, that's horrendous. That's a salary that's 50% almost above what the average is. So I don't want to lose these guys. I don't want to take a chance. And all the money that we set aside as a grant is based on the increase in taxes in Apex. We can sit there and not have this company come in, and we can tax those trees for what their value is, and we'll be money behind probably. I haven't run those numbers, but if we can bring this company in, now, obviously if we can bring this company in with nothing, no incentives, then that's so much the better. But you never know what you need to have on the table to make the whole thing work. So my personal feeling is I'd go four years, but I'll leave that up to our economic development manager to make any suggestions. And I think you suggest the three, but I am enthused about that amount of money that these people are paying.
And for the record, will you tell us so if something happens, and I said, you said, you may have said it already and whatever, if something happens and the people, this company leaves, they do something else, there is a policy somewhere that we will get our money back?
There will be clawback provisions in the agreement, yes ma'am.
Well, my feeling is everybody knows my position on incentives. I'm opposed to it. Totally am opposed to this proposal right here for a number of reasons, and I'll just reiterate them for the record. Number one, it plays favorites between companies. Sure, I don't dispute anything you said. Good salaries, you know, good place to work, good place to live.
Could use a programmer.
Well, that's part of the argument here. So they can afford to pay their engineers more now. Why? Because they're getting extra money from us as opposed to the other engineering companies around town that aren't getting help by their tax dollars, which they're paying in to help another company get an engineer. So it's wholly unfair, in my book. Number two is, okay, so the incentive is 115,000, that's roughly, 115, yeah, 115,000, if I'm doing my math right, that's only 1% of what they're investing, 11.3 million. So if I'm a company that's going to invest 11.3 million, am I really going to make a choice on location based on 1% of my budget? I doubt it. I think the companies just, they play games, you know, they're trying to, you know, work one town against the other, and I think the town's losing the end. So I recognize that, you know, you got to be in it to, you know, be a player, but to me, I wish all towns just categorically say no and let the companies pick the best town based on the merits of the town and not any bribery going on here with incentives. So I feel strongly, I'm strongly opposed to this, and I just wish we wouldn't play that game.
Well, you know, and I agree with many of your points too, quite frankly, except it is 1% of the total, so in reality, well, with one, I disagree because they can't pay their employees more because we're giving them 1% back over a three-year period. I'll have to disagree.
I'd agree. It's probably negligible, but still.
It is. What it also though says is, we, the town of Apex, are enthused about you. And if it's worth that amount of money to get these folks in here at a total of about a $10 million, 11 or 12 million investment, I think it's worthwhile. I think it's worthwhile, and if we lose this, as a result of this, and maybe we won't, but it's something you have to put on the table, I think, to ensure... And I talked with the mayor of Sanford a long time ago before we had any of this business here, and I told her, I said, you know, Apex doesn't have an incentive package. And she said, Bill, you guys aren't at the table. So they've been involved with this sort of thing too, and everybody does. And I agree with you, Councilman Schultz, I wish nobody did this. But the fact is, everybody is, and we were out of it for quite some time. And I look over my shoulder and I see Holly Springs is doing pretty good in some of their stuff, and we kind of, at the time, said, that'll never work, but it did. And we lost out a little bit. Now, I think what we're trying to do is bring jobs, whatever we kind of need to do, bring jobs to Apex so that our citizens can work close to home. Now, a lot of these people might not, but you keep on doing it. You keep on doing it. You add a business here and a business there, and gradually more of the people in Apex will be able to live right down the street. And it goes into infrastructure. If we can redesign our towns so that businesses are right by our, near our houses, we're not getting people up on these cement concrete ribbons going one direction to RTP in the morning and then coming back and adding to their carbon footprint and all that sort of stuff, and I won't get into that. But it's a quality of life issue. When I came here, I, when I was in LA, I was traveling 24 miles one direction at one point, and then another time 12 miles, and when I came here, I lived 1.7 miles from my house and my quality of life soared. It truly did. I could actually go home for lunch and see my wife. What a miracle. And I didn't have to...
Who was on for your wife? Is that okay?
I know, it was. It came close to divorce as a result. And we did have one lady who had binoculars and knew every day that I came home. But that's okay, that's a whole different story.
We're digressing.
We are digressing. But I do believe it's a quality of life...
Where's that three-minute timer?
It's a quality of life issue, and my time is up a while back. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
But I would go four years.
Can I go next?
Yes, please.
Okay, so, and I believe that the average wage in North Carolina is about 40,000, maybe 42 or 43, whatever, so this is way above just for North Carolina. A couple of things, you know, I start to think about the young people who are in the engineering programs in the high schools, now we've got two that have those. You know, some of our kids want to become engineers or related, in related fields, but many of them won't be able to come back to Apex and actually work. And some of our kids may actually want to come back to Apex and not be in larger cities. So I think this is, you know, a way for people to continue to go to town and come back. I would say, I do want to ask, what is the, sort of the difference related to Councilman Schultz mentioning about, you know, how existing companies feel that are already here versus are doing something to attract new ones? But I did thought, I thought that we had in the policy something related to not having a lot of competing type of businesses, but I can't remember exactly what that was.
What the policy does state is that the incentive tax, the development investment grant is available to those companies that are already here and that are expanding and new companies. So it's a level playing field for all companies. They just have to ask.
They need certain thresholds, right?
They have to meet the thresholds and they have to ask the question. That's all they have to do. But the policy's in place and the parameters are, have already been approved by council.
Okay. And I do think this is a step in towards being a little bit less of a bedroom community. And also, I imagine that there will be administrative jobs that will support some of these jobs, which those jobs may be a little bit less, but still more than some of the retail jobs that we have. And finally, if you pay more, you spend more. And so perhaps some of these folks will live here and then spend more locally. So that's what I would say about.
And for clarification, it is a manufacturing and product development center. This is not just a engineering firm. They have engineers employed by this manufacturing and product development center.
A more diverse type of jobs and skills, which, you know, is a good thing for us to encourage.
One point I forgot to make, and I'll be brief. To me, the way they leveled the playing field is to keep taxes low on these businesses. So small businesses have lower overhead and less impediments to grow.
That's true.
So you treat everybody fairly, everybody benefits, everybody thrives, hopefully.
I agree, but this, but this proposal right here is based on bringing in a larger tax base. We don't spend any more money than we bring in as a result of what these folks are doing. So it doesn't impact our small, other small businesses. And in terms of being selective, we're not selective, we, other than we look for the jobs that are available. And I don't think there's another pool company in Apex that would be a direct competitor. And, you know, if there is something along that line, I'm sure that our director of economic development would bring that to the forefront, and maybe we wouldn't. But I don't see competition with other businesses. This is just a very nice business to bring into Apex.
And actually, a lot of industries prefer clusters. So there's a very fine line between what we conceive as competition and what they perceive as clusters and synergy.
Yeah. And to me, and I know I'm beating a dead horse here, but to me, it's not just the business similarities, it's also the employee similarities. So you've got one engineering, an engineer working for a pool company versus a robotics company. It might be the same kind of mechanical engineer, they can work either company, even though the products are different. So they're still competitors, even though they're different industries.
Are you saying competition is not a good thing, or, I don't...
Well, competition's a good thing, but it's unfair competition. If we're helping one company out without the other, then they got the same engineers. You know what I mean?
And I understand, but it's such a small percentage. I mean, if we're talking 1% on salaries, you know, $1,000 difference.
It's negligible, but to me, it's the principle of the thing.
I know, I understand.
So I personally like this. I think this is a great way. I mean, we're sacrificing as a town not collecting, what, 115,938 over a three-year period. We're still collecting the difference, which is roughly $12,000 or something, but, so this company is going to have low taxes for three years for coming, for deciding to come to Apex. And then their taxes will jump up, but hopefully over those next three years, I mean, they're obviously bringing 11.3 million dollar investment, adding jobs, adding people that live here, that shop here, that live close by. I mean, you know, I just, it's a tremendous opportunity for us. I'm glad we're finally at the table with these companies, because sitting on the Economic Development Committee, we see all the projects that we get requests for and all the ones that we have no response for, or that we lose out on, because we don't meet the criteria they're looking for until they're gone. You know, we don't see them. So I think it's a great opportunity. We're collecting less taxes from them over a three-year period. The town and the taxpayers are not out spending money, we're just not collecting all of it over a three-year period. We're giving them a break.
And may I add one quick thing? To you, what's exactly what you said, we're likely collecting more than we are today on that same piece of property. That's the thing. So we are up, we're up.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
No, it is a public hearing. I apologize. I'll open the public hearing, but there's no one who has signed up, so I'll close the public. Seems like so long ago that we started doing public hearings.
Joanna, give us credit.
So I formally closed, closed the public hearing since no one signed up, and I'll call for a motion.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve.
I'd sure like to see four years instead of three.
Let's keep it at that rate.
Well, I think it's a guideline. I think it's a guideline, and we've got such a jewel here. And, you know, I'm not going to vote no, that's for sure. You got me trapped. I'll leave that up to Gene. But, okay.
Thanks for not being repetitive.
He's giving up the talk.
No, I'm sorry. You stopped yourself, I appreciate that.
Well, I was repetitive to a point.
No, I was giving you credit.
Well, I know, but you've been...
Say thank you, ma'am.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much, Mayor. You are my man.
All right, any discussion on the motion to approve? As submitted by staff? All right, I'll call for the vote. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
Nope.
All right, I'll count that as approved by a four-to-one margin. And before we move on to the next item, Joanna, if I, I'll just make a quick comment here. If we don't, if we, if we haven't looked up Alevo, A-L-E-V-O, please let's look them up and make sure we're not stuck like the state was for them. They shut down operations down in Concord by claiming bankruptcy, and I want to make sure that our performance and clawbacks protect us from that kind of thing. All right, that concludes, Mr. Stan might be able to help you with that research. All right, very good, yeah. I see him behind the monitor there. No, that's fine, that's fine. We, that concludes our public hearings for tonight. We now move to old business. This is a possible motion to approve a resolution authorizing the execution and delivery of an installment financing agreement with Branch Bank and Trust Company. Vance Holloman, Finance Director, presenting.
Yes, sir, Mayor. I think you've described the item very well there, but you do, did have substantially final documents to review. Again, it would be the last step necessary by the council in order to approve the $6 million installment financing agreement for land to be used for parks and recreation. It goes before the local government commission next Tuesday, and we do anticipate approval.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Holloman?
I do have a quick question. The word installment kind of clued me in. This is not a tip or anything like that, right?
No, sir. This is very close to, similar to a mortgage on a home. The land will stand for the payment, be the collateral.
And the interest rate is quite low.
2.51% for 15-year period, which is, which was a very good rate. We had anticipated a bit higher when we were doing our projections.
Yeah. You did a very good job, thank you.
Always.
The installments are paid annually?
Actually, on this one, we are going to have a semi-annual payment of both principal and interest, and that will actually result in a bit lower financing costs over the life of the debt than if it were the typical financing of an annual principal payment.
Very nice.
All right, thank you. And I'm not sure, but if you, it seems like you got a good rate. Mr. Adams, Steve Adams, must have gone and, I think he's our master negotiator now. But if he didn't help you, then good job. So let me ask, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve. Discussion on the motion. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right, that passes unanimously. We now move to unfinished business number one. This is a motion for the resolution authorizing the completion of the sale of the town-owned property. Mr. Havens, our town manager.
I saw this on the agenda when I got back from vacation.
Welcome back.
Several months ago now, you authorized the advertisement of sale for this piece of property, which is located at the intersection of 64 and 55. You're familiar with Fiddlesticks. It's a piece of land that the town owns, 7.7 acres, directly behind Fiddlesticks. It is landlocked, really does not serve any purpose for us at this point. We went through the upset bid process. We received one bid for $200,000, and we're here tonight to see if you want to sell this piece of land.
Is that the saying, who is that person whose property owner adjacent to Fiddlesticks?
Adjacent, correct. They have plans to redevelop that, the store hotel, different uses have been thrown about for that piece of land, but they need the additional footprint.
How many acres?
7.7. It's wet, it's encumbered by a sewer easement that runs through the middle of it, so it's...
And this is near the entrance ramp from 55 to 64?
Correct. So it's between Fiddlesticks and that, and on ramp.
Down that low area?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
All right. May I ask, did we get an appraisal?
We did. The appraised value was 290,000.
290,000 appraised.
Correct.
What did you offer again?
200.
200.
Being landlocked probably made it difficult.
Well, the appraisal probably reflected the landlockedness of it, right?
Yeah. The appraisal indicated, you know, the total site is 7.72 acres, and the appraiser indicated 3.2 acres of that is usable land.
3.2 acres is usable?
Correct.
Because of it being wet?
Wet and the sewer easement that encumbers it.
It seemed like, I'm in no rush to sell it.
I thought you might say that. And it's a rare time, but I get to agree with you.
The value's at 290, now it counts for everything, landlocked and, you know, everything else.
There is only one buyer for this property, basically, because it's the landlocking piece of property, but to be fair to the town, to the town's citizens, I personally think that we need to come up to what the appraised value is, or somewhere close. I think two-thirds of the appraised value is not close.
I agree too.
We often have to, we have to bite the bullet sometimes on things and pay more than we want, so I think sometimes people need to help the tax...
I don't blame him, you know, he knows he's going to be the only offer. Why not lowball it?
Mr. Havens, what was your conversation? I'm assuming you had those similar type of conversations with the bidder?
Steve Adams has been talking.
Is Mr. Adams here, by the way?
So this is their, this is their bid. So council does have the right to reject the bid, and we'll go back to them and say, hey, council didn't want to sell it for that. We can ask them if they would like to make another offer, and then the upset bid process would start again.
Are they aware of the 290,000 appraisal value?
Is it, it sounds like council's general position is that it's for sale, but not at that big of a discount. Am I hearing everybody correctly?
Yeah, correct.
Okay. So I think if, maybe we can send that message back. Would you like a motion for that, or? All right. Maybe I'd like to ask for, it looks like you're ready to make a motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion. We deny the offer by the...
All right, and we can give them guidance as to that it is for sale, but not at that number? Does that sound, okay? All right, is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion to deny? Just to be clear. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right, the motion to deny has passed unanimously. The guidance is that it is for sale, but not for that ridiculously number. Pick a better number, maybe? All right. But thanks for going through the upset bid process.
The only way we can do it.
I guess now they're going to be a little upset, but maybe they'll, if they want it and they can make it work, they'll come back with a better number.
Or they'll walk away and we keep it.
Yeah.
We can put a park there.
Put a gas station there.
Not on three acres of land with no access.
Exactly.
Tiny home.
We can have a drone park.
All right, so that one is dispensed, deny. Let me make sure I write that down in my notes. All right, now we go to new business number one. This is findings of fact, conclusion of law, and decision approving the specialty use permit, 17 SUP 03 Pine Springs Preparatory School, which sounds very familiar because it was about two hours ago that we were discussing it. Ms. Shelley, ma'am.
In order for the school to open and keep their funding, they actually have to be able to open by the end of the week, so it's part of that. Although typically you would see findings of fact on the consent agenda for the following meeting. see findings of fact on the consent agenda for the following meeting. It is unusual, but allowed, to approve the, the findings of fact and conclusions of law at the same meeting. I just had to have time to go make any tweaks. So the piece of paper that I handed out to all of you when we were in the, when we had adjourned for a break, actually is the findings of fact and conclusions of law. It's pretty straightforward.
Can we find the findings? Is this this one?
Yeah.
Oh, that's what that was.
Yep. Second page shows the three conditions that the applicant agreed to, since the council did not impose any other conditions. It's fairly straightforward, so.
And this is the location, the same location we just discussed, right? So it's temporary and-
Yep. Just because they have to be able to open the temporary school in order to keep their permanent state funding, so they have to get the findings of fact.
What is the likelihood they're going to send a student to this place? It sounds like the other school's going to be done in time, and this is just meeting the crossing of the t's and the dotting of the i's.
Um, we're guessing that there are probably going to be students there for at least a few weeks.
Oh, really?
But at this point, I have not visited the site, I don't, I've got some very minimal information from the applicant and from the Holly Springs inspectors that say that they're close, but that more than likely they'll be there for, you know, a week or two, or possibly longer, it just depends.
If their permanent school was in Apex, we would have taken care of it, because our staff takes care of our people.
I mean, this is the fastest finding of facts.
I'm telling you, it's like one-
My paper's still warm.
Is the school having incentives or anything? And they just came here because they thought Apex was great.
They did, and they called and they did, and they said, could you please, 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 please help get us in? And we said, we'll take you to council, but after that, it's up to them.
There's the incentive.
They got baited in.
Is there a motion to approve the finding?
I'll make a motion to approve.
And I'm going to abstain from this because I didn't get the-
Okay, then you're going to have to go to the back room.
I'm not going to have to. If I go out now, I'm going to that car, okay?